Good evening and welcome. I'm Karen Morton. I'm the Regional Director for the Republican Liberty Caucus of Florida. And we are here this evening to talk with our candidates running in Clay County on the primary ballot for County Commissioner. And we actually have five of the seven candidates who can appear on your ballot. And we've got them seated in order of district, so that you kind of get an idea of who's running against who. So the first person here is Jim Renninger. And Jim is with District Three. He is -- also running in District Three is Connie Thomas. In District Four, we have Betsy Condon. And in District Five, we have Kristen Burke and Leslie Doer. There are two members -- two candidates on the ballot who are not present. Randy Nepper contacted us today and indicated that he had decided not to be present. And Belinda Johnson contacted us last week to let us know that she was already scheduled to be out of town and could not change that schedule. So we're going to go ahead and talk with the five people who we have here. I think you'll be very interested in what they have to say. And it'll definitely help you make up your mind, because trying to pick a good county commissioner isn't always easy. So we're looking forward to hearing what they have to say. I'm going to introduce our moderator for the panel. This is a retired Navy captain. He is a former candidate, congressional candidate for District Four. And he's also the National Spokesman for We Can Be Heroes Foundation, Reiman Schoeff.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate that. So for our candidates, I'm going to go over a few rules, so you know exactly what -- do the groundwork, so you'll know that we're all on the same sheet of music. And just for myself, for the ladies here, I always say "Mr." or "Mrs." when I address you. Are all the ladies "Mrs."? You are? Mr. or Mrs. is so -- Mrs. Fine, okay. So as I go through, we'll have a two-minute open. And since Mr. Renninger, since you're number one, we'll start with you. And then when we do the closing, we'll do the opposite, and we'll start with you, Leslie, and then we'll work one end to the other. When I get to the question part of it, I will do my best to let you know that you're going to be the first person to answer the question, so that I don't ask the question then you're caught off-guard, that you've got to speak immediately. And I'll also tell you how much time you have, so you'll know how long to respond to the question. When you get within 15 seconds of your time, you're going to get this signal here, okay? When you're done with your time, we're going to wave old glory at you. And if you decide that's not good enough for you, and you just keep on talking, you're going to get the dreaded cowbell. Okay, as I move through the questions, if it comes time for you to speak and you want me to repeat the question, I will repeat the question as many times as you want me to, because we are here for you. And we want to allow you to address the question appropriately, so that each voter can make the correct decision on how they're going to vote when the election comes around. Even though I'm the guy asking the questions, I'm really the least important person here. You're the most important person here. So I ask that when I ask you the question and you answer it. Please answer it as if every chair was filled, and realize that the camera in front of you is what the voters are going to see. So as soon as I'm done asking a question and you answer it for your benefit, speak into the camera, because it's the people in the live stream that are watching you at this time. Okay? With that, we're ready to go. So we'll first start with our two-minute open. Mr. Renninger, you have the floor.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Republican Liberty Caucus for giving us the opportunity to address the citizens of Clay County. My name is Jim Renninger, and I'm running for Clay County Commission in District Three. I'm a former military veteran who has served 26 years in the United States Navy as a pilot, flying carrier aircraft off aircraft carriers. I've probably flown off every aircraft carrier bar the last two or three newest ones. But I was selected while in service, I was selected for three different commands, and I finished my naval career working as Chief of Staff on the George Washington Battle Group for an Admiral named Admiral Mullin. And the significance of that is he is one of the world's best leaders. He went on to be the CNO, the Chairman of the -- the head of the Navy, and as well as he went on to be the Chairman of Joint Chiefs. So I got to work with some of the most important people in our military at the time. After retiring as a captain, I worked as a financial planner briefly before I was selected to run the Aviation Center of Excellence for FSCJ out at Cecil Field. And there, we stood up an aviation training program for skilled aircraft technicians, pilots, and airport operators. I was promoted the Dean of all workforce programs at the college, where I interacted with the U.S. Department of Education, the U.S. Department of Labor, Enterprise Florida, Jax USA Partnerships, Jax Chamber, the Airport Authority, as well as the Port Authority. So I worked with all the major professional organizations in the city, such as First Coast Manufacturers, Northeast Florida Builders Conference. And I worked with some of the leading companies in the city, Budweiser, Mill Electric, and Saff General Electric. I was elected to Orange Park Town Council for serving three of three-year terms for nine years, and I operated as -- okay, is that it? Oh, you're serious about this, aren't you?
The dreaded cowbell.
Jim Renninger, running for Clay County Commission.
There's never enough cowbell. Okay, next up will be Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you. I'm married to percussionists, so there never is enough cowbell. Anyway, thank you so much. I'm Connie Thomas, and I'm so proud to be here tonight. And thank you so much to the Republican Liberty Caucus for having us. I think it's important to be able to have a moment to speak to our citizens and allow them the time to get to know us in a better sense. I am the recent Mayor and Councilwoman of the town of Orange Park, and to serve in that capacity was one of the highest honors of my life. I was born in Jacksonville and moved here at Clay County at the age of eight, and was raised here and graduated in my district from Orange Park High School. And I now work as a clinical social worker within my district as well. So I'm very, very proud to be from Clay County and to be raised among such special people. Many of the things that I brought to Mayor is something I want to extend to our county. One of the first things I did when I became Councilwoman was to bring a roundtable together of people with citizens and leaders throughout our community to look at our waterways and how to improve those. I did another roundtable discussion for homeless youth and how to improve that. And we ended up finding a partnership between Moosehaven and Clay Youth Crisis -- I mean, Youth Crisis Center to be able to house those teens. Very proud of that, that came about. And then I was able to bring about the longest table, which I know a lot of people came out and enjoyed this past year, and I hope that we can continue that throughout Clay County in the coming years. And the most recent thing is with the COVID crisis. I saw that emergency management wasn't going to be able to run, the many needs that our families were needing with food instability. And so I did an application towards Impact Clay and began what we now call Food for Clay County. And we were able to begin feeding many people who are struggling at this moment during this crisis. So once again, I'm Connie Thomas, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you so much.
Okay, yes, Miss Condon.
Well, good evening, and I'd also like to thank the Republican Liberty Caucus for having us tonight. I'm Betsy Condon. I'm a Christian conservative wife, mother, and business owner. I'm a native of Keystone Heights, graduate of Keystone Heights High School. And I chose to raise my family and build my business in Keystone Heights, because District Four matters to me a lot. I believe good business brings good jobs, and good jobs bring a thriving economy, and that's what I want to see in District Four. I also understand that we need a Commissioner who's willing to stand up for our values, fight for what matters in District Four, and protect our rights. I'm very proud to have the endorsement of our firefighters, because public safety is one of the most important things the County Commission is in charge of. And while we don't actually go out and do the tasks of public safety, I will always support our firefighters, paramedics, and law enforcement. My priorities are better roads, better drainage, and trash management in District Four, reliable high-speed, real high-speed internet access for everyone in District Four. We need to see our tax dollars at work in our district. We've kind of felt like we have been left out of that in some ways. And then finally, protection of our natural resources, our lakes, Black Creek, and our state forests. That last point is personal for me. I do have a degree in environmental health science, and so that matters a lot. I feel qualified to weigh in on those issues. But in addition, my family has lived on Lake Brooklyn and Keystone Heights for over 70 years. We have to protect our natural resources and our family values that make Clay unique and special. I'm Betsy Condon, running for District Four County Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Burke.
Hi, I'm Kristen Burke, lifelong Christian conservative Republican, business owner for the past 21 years in Clay County. I attend Russell Baptist Church in our area also, also for the past 21 years. I'm married to a wonderful man named Harold, who was born and raised here in Clay County in Green Cove Springs. And we are raising our four kids also here in Russell Landing, which is right near Sandridge in our district. I am beyond excited for the opportunity to run for District Five County Commissioner. Running for County Commissioner is not something my family took lightly. We took a lot of votes, had a lot of meetings, and said a lot of prayers. And we decided that it was a much-needed step for not only our family and our neighborhood, but also for the county that we love. Yes, I have no experience in politics. I'm sure probably the majority of you watching have probably never even heard my name before this campaign. I know that that's not what you're really looking for, though. What is definitely most important to you is probably that I have a servant's heart, and because I truly care about what happens in our county. It is my promise to do the best I can to continue making Clay County the place that we love and that we are proud to call home. The Clay County Board of County Commissioners' mission is to provide for the quality of life, safety, and health of our citizens. As a healthcare provider, this mission is similar to my mission towards caring for my patients, and also in regards to my first and many of my platforms. My platform, I would like to protect our environment. I was very instrumental in with the Solite property, and I was to continue to fight and stand up for Solite to take responsibility for the damage they cause to our pristine land and waterways. I'm also excited to work and try to figure out a way to make roads happen quickly, keeping taxes low, looking at Lake Asbury Master Plan, and also the seniors center in Green Cove Springs. I'm Kristen Burke, District Five County Commissioner. I'd love to have your vote.
Thank you. Mrs. Doer.
Good evening, and thank you, RLC, for having us at this forum. My name's Leslie Doer. I am a Christian conservative community leader. I'm also a wife, mother, and small business owner. And I came to Clay County about 20 years ago and fell in love with it. And when I fell in love with Clay County, the first thing I wanted to do was get involved. So I did. I got involved with the Republican Party of Clay County. I became a precinct person and soon started to walk and help Republican candidates get elected. I became Chairman of the Republican Executive Committee, and then I also became Chairman of the Republican Party of Florida, where I led the state party in one of the largest elections in the United States, and that was the reelection of Governor Scott. I elected his entire cabinet and all of the Republican seats, House seats, and Republican State Senate seats. After that, I was appointed by Governor Scott to the SBDC, the Small Business Development Council. And Governor Scott and Governor DeSantis appointed me to the Board of Trustees for the St. John's River State College. I've also attended and been part of our Clay County Chamber of Commerce, where I've been on the Board of Trustees there for approximately eight years, making sure that we bring businesses to Clay County. I have an economic development background. I have a background in banking, HR, and also run a small business in real estate. And one of the most important things that we can bring to the bedroom community of Clay County is more businesses. And how do we bring more businesses? Is we make Clay County attractive. And it is already attractive because of its school system and its wonderful quality of life. Another thing that I wanted to just bring up, a couple of the other boards that I served on, was the Haven Hospice, and also Lighthouse Learning Center. My husband and I are also members of the Cattlemen's, and also an NRA Life member. Couple of the issues that are going on in this district, of course, are growth, transportation, and of course, supporting our law enforcement. So I thank you again for this evening. My name's Leslie Doer, running for your County Commission, District Five.
Okay, thank you for that. That now completes our opening comments. Now we're going to move into our questions. We have some questions that are for everybody on the panel, and we have some questions that are specific to the district that you're running in, and when I get to that point, I'll explain it. If in your answers, if you decide to take a personal shot at someone else who is running for the position as you, that is certainly your position if you want to do that. If you do make a personal comment, the other individual will have 30 seconds to rebut that. But what we hope you do is that you take this time to convince the voters of why they should vote for you, and not take the time to convince the voters of why they shouldn't vote for someone else, okay? So with that, we'll get started with the questions. The first one will go with Mr. Renninger, and you'll have two minutes to answer this question. So as a County Commissioner, once you get elected, how would you foster better relationships between the County Commission and the municipalities?
The what?
The municipalities.
Municipalities?
Yes.
Well, the first thing I would do is get to know the leaders in the municipality. If you're talking about Orange Park, I'm well-versed in that, being elected in Orange Park for three terms, nine years, Mayor twice. But that's not the whole county. So you have to go down to Keystone, you have to go down to Green Cove. I know most of the council people on the Green Cove Commission to see what their problems are and get a feel for what issues they have that we might be able to solve as a group. The county has some overlapping responsibilities in adult centers, in libraries, and things as such. So those are the natural areas that we would want to concentrate on. The county has, throughout, has issues with stormwater. Stormwater doesn't stop at municipal lines. We learned that in Orange Park. It goes into the county. So we want to coordinate with the municipality to try to solve their problems. So the answer I would like to emphasize is you need to listen to the constituents, you need to listen to the leaders in the county or in the municipality, and then work as a county to solve the problem.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you very much. I have served on the Board of Directors for the League of Cities, and so I've got to know our municipalities very well. And in fact, I enjoy all of them and hearing about the different topics that they're interacting within their towns. I believe in local control. And so because of that, I really uphold what the municipalities want to bring forth. I think it's important that we do have an ongoing Mayor's meeting with the Commissioners, sitting in on that, the Chair of the Commission preferably, and sit in on that and bring back to us what those needs are. And of course, municipality being the town of Orange Park, in our district, of course, I want to stay very plugged in with our town. And it was because of our town needs that I saw the need to run for this seat. So it's vital, and it's important, that we have a great relationship with our municipalities.
Thank you. Mrs. Condon.
I think the relationships between the municipalities and the Commission are vital to solving issues. And I don't just think those relationships should lie with the Mayors. I have a very good relationship with the Keystone Heights Mayor, Karen Lake. We serve in the same Rotary Club, and I consider her a friend. But that doesn't mean that the other four Commissioners don't have valid opinions. So I think it would be important as a Commissioner to form relationships with all of the Commission seats in the different municipalities, so that you could understand the issues in different constituents' points of view and the different Commissioners' points of view. Therefore, we could solve issues together.
Thank you. Mrs. Burke.
Thank you. Again, speaking from not having experience in politics, this, what comes to my mind is, in running a business and dealing with family members, it doesn't matter really who you're dealing with, if you listen to what they have to say and are willing to work well with them, I think that's the answer. With working with Mayors, I think that would be amazing. And I know we have many different wonderful people as leaders in our counties, in our county. But I think just the basic of working well with someone and listening and being willing to take action and have the energy to get out there and do what's necessary, it would be great between the municipalities.
And Mrs. Doer.
I'm green, I can go. All right. I think it's pretty much the similar, as the other candidates have stated, and that's the relationship building. Green Cove Springs, I have a relationship with some of the members that are already on the board. Mayor Lake, I remember, we've known each other for years, as well as some of the people on the Orange Park Town Council. It's important not only to just have the relationship, but literally to give them a phone call and say, "Let's go have lunch, and let's talk about these issues. Let's have a roundtable discussion. Let's look at planning." It's the municipalities that get affected by the County Commission. And if we don't sit down and go, "Okay, how can we work and do this better for the taxpayer", we never come up with a solution. We just kind of sit here and bat the ideas back and forth. Yes, I am a Doer, and it is kind of funny to say, but I think that's the frustration that we have in government, is we don't act. And I think when we go to a council, we sit down, we set a plan. How are we going to function? What are we going to do? And how are we going to accomplish that best for the citizens out there in the county?
Okay, thank you. Now we have some district-specific questions. We're going to start first with District Three, start first with Mrs. Thomas. And you have one minute to answer this question. So your district has two different communities in Fleming Island and the town of Orange Park. How do you plan to work between these two areas?
Well, as I said, I live and work -- I work in the Fleming Island area, and of course, I live in the town of Orange Park. Something that's running, there's a running theme now in those two communities, and it's dealing with the waterways. And those are not separate at all. Aquarius concourse in the Bel Air area in our district is majorly flooded every time a hurricane comes. It's just, has devastated the homes there to where many of them are unlivable. The homes that are along the St. John's River are, in the Fleming Island area, are having issues as well with rising tides. So there are issues that run throughout, no matter what. And I'm sure, you know, as we talk about the COVID crisis and that kind of thing, and people struggling with their businesses or struggling with their families, that's something that would continue throughout the district as well.
Okay. And one minute for you also, Mr. Renninger. Absolutely. So your district, once you get elected, has two different communities, in that you'll have Fleming Island and the town of Orange Park. What is your plan, how to work within both of the areas?
Well, although the communities are different, the people are all the same. Quite honestly, they all have very similar problems. We talked about flooding, and we talked about, you know, Fleming Island is an island, and it has a lot of drainage problems. We have drainage problems all over the town of Orange Park. So I intend to meet with the, or review the Fleming Island Master Plan. I intend to, well, like I said, I was on Orange Park Town Council for nine years. I kind of know what's going on in Orange Park. So, but nonetheless, it's not only what you know, but it's who you know. You have to get to know the people at Fleming Island, you have to get to know the people in Orange Park. I've got half that problem completely solved, and the other half, probably 80% solved. So you get to meet the people, identify the problems, and work on solutions together.
Thank you. Now we'll go to District Four, which is you, Mrs. Condon, and you'll have one minute to answer this question. And I believe you've already touched on it, but you can expand as much as you want to in your 60 seconds. The question that was submitted to us is, how can you, as a County Commissioner, help to acquire high-speed internet for your district? And they put here Clay Hill, Keystone, Somme Middleburg, and all the places in between.
Well, if elected, day one that I serve on the Commission, I would call for a workshop, so that we could map out a plan of exactly how we are going to get high-speed internet to all of our rural areas. With the COVID crisis, it became glaringly clear that there were families who were in major crisis. Their children couldn't attend school, parents couldn't work from home. And it's just not acceptable in the 21st century that high-speed internet is not the same as electricity available to every household. And so I really want to work hard with all local, the municipalities, state level, and it will take federal to get this done. There are certain things that people have proposed that could help, like broadband, but that's still not available. It's not available at my house, in fact. So we really need to have a workshop from day one to map out how we're going to solve this problem for our citizens.
Thank you. Now we'll move to District Five. Mrs. Doer, you will respond to this question first. You have one minute to answer the question. The Solite property presents a problem regarding property development versus the environmental health issues. How are you going to rectify these issues?
Well, first, one of the things that we did way back when I was on the Planning and Zoning Development Commission, back in, I want to say almost 2006, is the first thing that we enacted in the Lake Asbury Master Plan was to make sure that nobody could develop that property or do anything to it without first cleaning it up, and that is to EPA standards. So if it even becomes onto the Board, I think the first thing that has to do is we have to involve our community. And the community has to be the stakeholder in it. It's also been discussed already, and I don't know, most people know who Howard Wanamaker is. I cannot think of a better county manager that is running our county that has already dealt with a major spill when he was the NAS Jacksonville Commander. And he dealt with an environmental spill there and brought it back up to EPA standards. So getting the community involved and making sure that we bring that back up to standards before it's even touched, and we have a plan in order to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Burke.
Thank you so much for asking that question. Solite is something that is very important to my family. We live right in the backyard of Solite, 900 acres of contaminated property. It was a disgrace what Solite allowed to happen to that property, not even letting their employees know that they are in danger. I have been honored to be able to speak to many of the families of people that have died due to what happened in Solite. And it is my battle to, and what I am committed to, to stand up and be heard, to force Solite to completely clean that property. And they continue to come back and try to do things that are not appropriate, and they are to be held responsible alone for the cleanup of the property. And I am, and the citizens have been great at speaking up also, and that will continue to be the case.
Thank you. Now we're going to go back to all five of you. This first, next question will be answered first by you, Mrs. Thomas. Okay, and you have one minute to answer the question. So what was submitted to us is, the current Sheriff has proposed a large budget increase. Are you personally willing to vote for that increase? And if it goes through, how are you going to pay for it?
Great question. No, I do not believe, right now, especially with the COVID crisis and the loss of income to our county and to our municipalities, that we would expect everyone to keep their budget in line and flat right now, until we see what's going on within our state and see what kind of revenue comes in in the next few months. As Mayor of the town of Orange Park, I placed a moratorium, asked the council to place a moratorium on any new spending until September, so that way things could be realigned and we could start looking at how we were going to bounce back from this and how long it was going to take. So, no, I feel like the Sheriff needs to keep that budget flat, and no, I would not want to pay for any increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Condon.
Well, first and foremost, I support our law enforcement. I will never vote to defund the police or all of the current buzz things that we're seeing on the news. It's just ludicrous. But I do think that we need to be fiscally responsible. So I think working with our Sheriff to see where we can work through some of the cuts that we're going to be facing, it's just, we have lost revenue due to COVID. And I think our Sheriff understands that, and I think he's willing to work with our County Commission. Sometimes it looks like it's more of a negotiation, and so you come in and ask for a little bit more, but in reality, there are places that I'm sure our Sheriff can cut things, as well as some of our other departments, so that we can come in line with what the taxpayers are providing to us. But first and foremost, I support our law enforcement, and I want to make sure that every one of them knows that that is our priority. Public safety has to matter.
Thank you. Mrs. Burke.
I second that. Definitely back the blue, and I am definitely in support of law enforcement. I do not, am not in favor of the increase in the budget with the Sheriff's Office. I personally, my platform is to have better communication and better transparency in our county, and I feel like my opinion should be there. We should have a line-by-line printout of what this budget is being spent on. We are not being communicated to on that part in a clear We are not being communicated to on that part in a clear enough manner. So no, definitely, I do not support the increase in budget.
And Mrs. Doer?
Thank you. At the last Board of County Commissioners meeting, they discussed the sheriff's budget, and the sheriff still has to come back with some figures in which they're coming out with on Monday. There will be a special meeting. So in order to answer that question, it's a little bit premature. Right now, with a $357 million budget, about $120 million goes to about half-and-half, fire, rescue, and police. We have an $89 million ad valorem, that's our property tax that covers it. We're short about $30 million. Right now, the sheriff is asking for $6.9 million. We are also looking at a post-COVID. We're at about 10% unemployment. We've lost about 3/4 of a million, about $750,000 of sales tax. We are losing that revenue. Our gas tax is flat, and I think all of our constitutional officers know that we have to tighten our belt at this point. So until Monday comes along, should we really look at where the sheriff is before making that decision?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Renninger?
Well, thank you. No, I, you know, first of all, you have to listen to the whole brief that Sheriff Daniels presented to the commission. And his first comments were that he's willing to negotiate. And I think that the commission has the responsibility to take a hard look at the budget of the sheriff. Some of the items, you know, in the presentation were pie charts. There's a lot more detail to be investigated. And in light of the request or the requirement to kind of keep ad valorem taxes flat at 8.101, the commission has a responsibility to take a good, hard look at the sheriff's budget, as with all the budgets in the county, to try to do the best job and support the men in blue, and give them what they need and not what they want. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Our next question will be first answered by Mrs. Condon. You have one minute to answer this question. So what was submitted to us is, while several of the municipalities currently require business license, the private developers now want a countywide business license tax that will be collected and given to an economic development corporation run by those developers. Are you in favor of this new business tax, and why?
So I am in favor of a business license, and here's why. I own a business myself, and I pay $25 a year to the city of Keystone Heights for my business license. And for that, they ensure that I have insurance, that I'm running my business per code, that I'm not some fly-by-night operation that's coming in. And so I do support knowing who has our businesses and is running our businesses in our county. Earlier this year, at our county commission meeting, there were waste haulers who came and spoke in front of the commission and said, "These unlicensed, unapproved waste haulers from Jacksonville are coming into Clay County and stealing business away, and there's no way to know who they are." Well, they do have commercial haulers approved, but we need to know who's running businesses in Clay County so that we can ensure that they are representing our citizens well. And so I think for that, a license is appropriate.
Thank you. Mrs. Burke?
As a business owner, I am held accountable to the county, to the citizens, to my patients, to my employees. And whenever there is nothing as a business license, there is no way to know really who is operating out there. Been to some meetings in the area and the community, spoke to many of the citizens. And there's businesses being run out of houses, which is okay in certain circumstances. But whenever it gets out of hand, out of control, you have 20 cars in a driveway doing auto repair, that's just not right. So definitely, a business license, I think, is a great idea, and definitely a way to hold our people accountable and make our county even better.
Mrs. Doer?
I like the idea of a business license if we can do it economically, and it doesn't end up costing us more money. That is the biggest thing that has been the hindrance of not having a business license over the last five or 10 years. Now, the EDC, the Economic Development Commission, is a group of about 22 major businesses, and they do a fantastic job of bringing businesses here. And when you bring a business here and you create tax dollars and tax revenue, it adds to our budget, thereby not having property tax increases on the citizens and property owners. So the EDC is an important mechanism in order to bring businesses here. Right now, I know that they're working on creating shovel-ready parcels out there so that we can bring those businesses, show them a parcel, and have power and electric already ready to go, and possibly already have permitted a building of 10, 20, 40,000 feet, 40,000 square feet, so they could move right in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Renninger?
Yes, I'm in favor of a business license, simply because, you know, when you go to, this pandemic exemplifies the reason you need something like it. In Clay County, we have no idea what businesses are even in the county. So, you know, bars are shut down. Where are the bars? Protection of the consumer is also vital importance. Tree trimmers, tree surgeons, waste haulers, window installers. If you don't have control, if you don't know who's operating in your town, your county, it's just that. You don't know what's happening. So to protect your citizens, I think it's good to have a control as to who's working in your county, and also have some leverage to either allow them or disallow them if they don't perform up to satisfactory standards.
Thank you. Mrs. Thomas?
I really like the idea of that money flowing to economic development. I think that makes sense if we have licenses throughout Clay County. I must say, in the town of Orange Park, we've had a real hard time keeping up with even our licenses there and making sure that we're up to date on that. And we were looking at, would it be beneficial by adding extra staff or adding those hours to staff to track that? So once again, I think we have to look at the cost in doing all that. But I think it's very important to know who the businesses are in our county, of course. And I think it would be wonderful to send that money to economic development to further our county's needs.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mrs. Burke. And you'll have one minute to answer this question. Normally, the engine of the economy is small business. This year with COVID, small businesses have been hampered severely. Can you give us an idea of what the future looks like as far as our small business? I.e., what is your plan, or what is your thoughts of how to help small businesses get back on their feet so that they can not only survive, but thrive?
Very good question. As a small business, we've had to be very careful in operating our business and figuring out which ways to better serve the people with COVID and the pandemic. And small businesses have definitely suffered, and we hear it every day, being able to open and then having to close back again with an increase in numbers. And small business has to be thought of. We need more small business in our county. We need to broaden our tax base. With small businesses, I think that, speaking with the county manager, was able to find out that they are working together with the chamber and with the EDC and actually trying to figure out how to attract more businesses. Manufacturing, small business, large business, we actually have to have more to increase our jobs with everything, with the growth that we have coming into our county.
Thank you. Mrs. Doer? Do you want me to ask again?
Sure.
So normally, the engine of the economy is small business. This year with small business because of COVID, they've been severely damaged due to the COVID pandemic. What we're looking for is, what is your idea, or what is your vision for the future of being able, from your position, of helping small businesses to get back on their feet and not only survive, but thrive in the future?
Get the government out of the way. Reduce government regulations. That is the first thing that needs to happen. And as small businesses out there, they have certain things that they have to do to get running, get power, get electric, whatever they do. Let's make it easier for them. The chamber is helping in enormous feats by getting them the PPP plan. I know they've helped a number of people process their PPP when they were having a problem doing that. And I think those community outlets will help do that. The EDC as well will help those businesses get through those regulations that might be there today. If we can get rid of them and get businesses thriving again, we can make it work a lot better.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Renninger?
Well, the CARES Act funding is in place right now for small businesses. Being distributed by Clay County Commission right now. But that's not the solution. The solution is to make our environment safe. And we need to do as much as possible to promote safety within the community, to get people out and about and get back to normal life again. So whatever we can do in the county to help that situation. The other thing we can do is work with the business incubator that we just stood up. I think with the chambers standing that up. Work with St. John's River Community College to look at business plans and things like that. Promote the sound business practices that will convert a 50% or 80% failure rate in the first two years to 20% or something like that. Thank you.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes, I was going to mention the CARES Act as well. That has really brought some really wonderful things together. The chamber and the economic development have come together and have formed what they call the incubator. I think that word is kind of misleading in some ways, that it's only about starting businesses, whereas I see it more as a triage center for businesses who may be having difficulties right now due to the COVID crisis or just difficulties all along. So they're really going to sit down with the businesses and listen to their needs and see how they might be able to fill in the blanks that are missing. I'm really in support of that, and I think it's important that they return to us as the commission to tell us exactly what the needs of our businesses are. One thing we don't do really well is listen often, and we need to do better at that. And they are going to have firsthand messaging from those businesses, exactly what their needs are in our community.
Thank you. And Mrs. Condon?
You know, I think about, in Clay County, we're really good at handling hurricanes and tropical storms. And the way that we got really good at that is by looking backward after a crisis is over and looking at what went well and what didn't go well. And I think that once this pandemic is over, hopefully very, very soon, we need to do that with our small business owners. You know, we left small business owners behind in April. The country moved on. And I've compared it to, in Florida, we know how to deal with a hurricane, but that doesn't affect the whole nation. And this pandemic has affected our whole nation and really the world. And so small businesses have been affected from their suppliers and their customers. And so we really need to listen to what went well and what didn't go well, and reevaluate from there. So I don't think we can actually determine yet what we need to do, but I think we do need to listen to our small business owners.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with you, Mrs. Doer. Okay, you'll have two minutes to answer this question, up to two minutes. So in Clay County, currently is operating in a deficit. And that's because of the COVID that we've already been discussing to this point, because of small businesses and others shutting down, filing bankruptcy, and just not being able to do business. What we're asking here is, since there is a huge reduction in people paying taxes and gas tax, what is your vision, or what is your plan, or is it even possible for us to get out of this hole budget-wise and turn things around?
There's always hope of turning things around. And I think one of the things that's going to happen is, as we go through to the end of this year, we're still going to experience some budget cuts as we go into next year. I've looked at the five-year plan as they've projected the numbers out. We don't know what this is going to do in our future, and we have to be mindful of where those funds are going to come from. The best thing that Clay County can do is, of course, attract more businesses. We have a thriving Economic Development Commission that's coming out there with ideas to attract businesses here. We need to make sure that we tell everybody about Clay County, how wonderful it is. Our school system draws people here every day. I'm in real estate. People come here. They want to live, play, and work in Clay County because of that. And then from when they get here, they want to start a business. Well, let's make sure that we make it easy for them to start a business. Some of the business people and some of my supporters that I've spoken to about that and starting that business, because ultimately, each one of those businesses creates tax dollars. So when we go to the county commission and you take your business to the county to start it, you should be greeted. How can we help you? How can we get your business going? And then after you go through the process of getting your business started, the first thing you should do, much like I do in my business, is I ask for a performance review. Give me a Google review. How did you do? So I can find out what kind of Realtor I am to my customers. What did they like, and what can I improve on? We can do that at the county level and ask for a review. We can ask them, "How did your business do? Did you have any issues? Did you have any problems? How can we make this process better?" If we don't look at how we can do better at our government, then we've lost it. So we need to make sure that we review ourselves.
Thank you. Mr. Renninger?
Yeah, I agree. We need to use this as a springboard to develop industry within Clay County. You need to look at the qualified targeted industries that Enterprise Florida has already identified. We need to go out and try to entice companies to come here. We need to train, work with the education system to train the future workers in high-scale, high-wage jobs. We need to do as much as we can to, you know, I was embarrassed kind of when I was interviewed by First Coast Manufacturers, and they said, "List all the manufacturing in Clay County." It's a real short list. So my goal is to get in the middle of that with Enterprise Florida, with Jack's USA Partnership, with Clay County Chamber, with the Economic EDC, Clay EDC, and try to promote businesses' work and solicit their movement to Clay County, you know, instead of Duval County.
Thank you. Mrs. Thomas?
Well, once again, I'll go back to the fact that we really need to keep our budget very flat right now and to wait and see exactly how things are going to unfold. That being said, our building permits are at 850 to 900 a year. They have stayed that way so far. I think that there will be some influx of funds, but of course, we know that the state's going to be taking away some funds because people are not going to be out spending like they have been. It's important that we keep families stable, and we keep businesses stable. We want to keep the ones that we have already here intact and ready to go. And so that is part of us to, we're charged with the safety and welfare of our community, and we need to make sure that they are safe and that they are earning an income, and they are able to survive through this crisis. And then when we get at the end of it, we can start having that creative mind again and think of all the great ways that we can turn things around and, you know, provide new partnerships and those kind of things. But right now, it's all about stability and making sure that our businesses and our families are okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Condon?
Well, I would agree with the statements that have been made already that with 10% unemployment, we certainly need to attract more businesses to Clay County. I'm proud to be one of those manufacturers that Mr. Renninger talked about, but I know that we're one of only a few. I'll tell you, one of the gems in Clay County that is in Keystone Heights, that is untapped market, is the Keystone Heights Airport. It is ripe for development. It has a new major manufacturer called MHD Rockland that's coming down from Canada to bring their headquarters here. They have employees who want to move to the area. There is all kinds of land out there that can be developed. They're in the process of running lines for the sewer and water to go out there from Clay Utilities. So there is a lot of exciting development going on in the Keystone Heights area. And if you haven't made it out there to the airport, I would encourage you to do that because I think District 4 can be part of the solution for our deficit instead of being a drain. And so I really am excited for what is up and coming in District 4.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Burke?
Echo, I would echo definitely the ideas about bringing small business and bringing more business into the county. I, you know, with the growth we have here, people are scared right now. People don't know what the future holds with what has already happened in this year, and rightly so. We don't know what's going to happen, if something's going to happen later on with this pandemic. So we have to be safe, and we have to be secure. And we have to speak to and get out there and talk to our small businesses and try to help make sure they're taken care of. We have so much land in our county that is able to be developed for small business and large business. And I think just getting behind that and trying to let people know, "Look, you're going to be driving through our county in this new expressway, moving here. Why not work here?" And so definitely, opening up businesses is a major key with that.
Thank you. For our next question, Mr. Renninger, we'll begin with you. You have one minute to answer the question. What was submitted to us is, there are many unpaved roads in Clay County, and many people want some of their tax money to be want some of their tax money to be used to pave these roads. What do you say to these residents?
Well, yeah, there are, I forget how many, hundreds of miles of dirt roads in Clay County. And I think the budget for next year includes $500,000 to pave unpaid roads, not nearly enough. The commission did a study several years back of road conditions, and it was so overwhelming that, quite honestly, it was put on a shelf and not acted upon. What you need is a strategic plan to develop, to fix the roads that are there, to pave the roads that aren't paved, and make it an initiative from the public that they want this. This is a want, okay? This is, or rather, this is a need, I guess. When you have emergency vehicles that can't transit to the fire or to the police issue, it's a real problem. It's not a want, it is a need. So we need a plan to move forward and pave all the roads in Clay County.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Thomas?
When you said that, the first thing I thought of was that. I'm one of those people that grew up on a dirt road, and we really enjoyed it. But that being said, there is a $130 million bond that the county has taken on to improve roadways. And I think that we definitely need to do that. We need to take people off of these septic systems that are harming our environment and having them hook back into the county utilities. There are just many things that we need to do along with paving those roads to bring in infrastructure along with it. So I think the county has a really good plan. Our county manager's really on top of that, and they've really assessed what the most urgent needs are for our roads. And I think we just need to follow through with that plan over the next several years.
Thank you. Mrs. Condon?
Well, most of those unpaved roads are in my district and in District Four, so I certainly have a passion to see these roads paved. And if not paved, have the drainage fixed on those roads so that school buses can get down them, law enforcement can get to homes when they need to respond, our medical personnel and fire can respond. It's a real, it's becoming a real emergency, and certainly half a million dollars a year is not going to cut it. I think the first thing that I would ask for is a real review from our county manager, and I think he does a phenomenal job. I would agree with the statement made earlier. But I'd really challenge, does it cost, really cost a million dollars a mile to pave a road, especially when it's in a rural location and it just needs paving and drainage? So that's the first thing I think that I would ask for, and we really need a real focused plan. If you go on the county's website today, that spreadsheet hasn't been updated since November of 18. So we need to know, the citizens deserve to know where their road stands and when they can expect it to be paved.
Thank you. Mrs. Burke?
What came to mind, my mind with this question is, I was speaking to a present commissioner, and he was telling me that when he came onboard with the commission, that the budget was a million dollars for road maintenance and $500,000 had not been even used. And what I said to that is, so we have different amounts that are allotted to each district for roads, and if it's not used and it's not used, however, we definitely have districts like Keystone, District Four, that needs more so paved roads. Why can't we find a way to make it where the monies can go to the counties that need it the most? If we have some that are maybe just have some small potholes, you know, definitely it's nice to have nice paved roads, but we need to look at other areas of our county to see where the need is first with that and maybe make a change in how we allot that money.
Thank you. And Mrs. Dewar?
Roads, roads and drainage are probably two of the most important things in our county. I happen to live on a dirt road, and I don't want my dirt road paved. However, it's interesting, not all dirt roads are owned by the county. So some are actually owned by the landowner, in which the land actually goes to the center of the road. So unfortunately, the county would then have to either buy the road before they paved it. So there's a lot of mechanisms in front of that before you get to paving a road. It does cost about a million dollars to do just one mile. They can do two different types of paving. They can put a cap on a road, which is a lot less expensive, that only lasts about three years. Or they can do a brand-new road, which is a little bit more expensive and lasts more years. But we definitely need to do an in-depth study because as soon as you start to pave a road in a dirt road area, then you have people in a high-traffic area that are getting potholes. So we need to make sure that we do it in an equitable fashion and make it transparent so everybody can see what we're doing.
Thank you. We're now down to our last question. Mrs. Thomas, we're going to start with you to answer this question. It's going to be a quick one. You only get 30 seconds to respond to this, okay? The question is, besides growth and budget, what is the biggest challenge that you see for Clay over the next four to eight years?
Initially, I would have said waterways and drainage, and with these stronger hurricanes coming, we really, really have to tackle that. A lot of our homes are beautiful. They're right up against the water, but yet that's the Achilles' heel at the same time, and they're having a lot of flooding. But more importantly right now, of course, is the COVID crisis and how we're going to get through that. And once we get through that, like I said, then we can move on to these bigger-picture items.
Thank you. Mrs. Condon?
Infrastructure. There is not enough infrastructure and not a good plan that I've seen, a long strategic plan, to address all the growth that is exploding, especially in the Middleburg area. And we need to be prepared for it. We need to plan for it so that we don't end up like St. John's County and have to raise taxes. I do not want to raise taxes. I want to see us have a good plan to address infrastructure.
Thank you. Mrs. Burke?
I second the infrastructure. I definitely see the growth affecting our kids. We need schools, we need the roadways. And the second one, big one, would be protecting our environment with the pandemic and the things that have happened with that. We need to make sure our people are safe and equipped.
Thank you. Mrs. Dewar?
I would definitely say roadways and economic development. The more that we can bring businesses here and create a tax base for us, the more economically independent we can be. So road, and that will also create sales tax for our roadways.
Thank you. And Mr. Renninger?
Yes, I agree. Economic development would be my focus. We need to bring more industry into Orange Park and keep the migration from going into Duval County. We need to protect our citizens. We need to make a place, develop a place where they can work, live, and play.
That now completes the Q&amp;A portion of our panel. We're now into the two-minute close. Mr. Renninger, you began. We'll make the last now the first. Mrs. Dewar, this is your two minutes. You have the floor.
I'd like to thank the RLC tonight for having us do this forum. It's wonderful to be in front and discuss ideas in Clay County. You know, everybody out there that's watching this, we are in an unprecedented time. This is COVID-19. We have never, ever set foot down this road before. We have a government, federal government, making decisions for us. We have county government making decisions for us. We've gone from 2.3 unemployment to about 10%. We have people hurting. We know that our tax income is going to be less and less. We have kids that aren't even going to school. So I ask you, as you go forward and look at the, as we go forward in this election cycle, when you look at a candidate, do you want somebody with experience? Do you want somebody that understands we have a $357 million budget and that negotiates for a living? And that when we go forward and have to make some hard decisions on our budget, is willing to make those decisions? The other thing too, and I've knocked on about a couple thousand doors already, the constituency in there is scared of what's going on. And I hear you because sitting in a seat of county commission is about them. It's not about my decision. It's about listening to them. That's why I put my phone number on my card that I hand out. Because a representative form of government we are, based on our constitution, I am there to represent everybody that is a voter in Clay County, even if you're not a voter. I don't care. Give me a call. You're in Clay County. I want to hear from you, how you want to vote on certain issues. So I thank the RLC for allowing us to come tonight. I would like to ask for your vote, Leslie Dewar, on August 18.
Thank you. Mrs. Burke?
Well, as a small business owner of several businesses in Clay County, I have over 20 years of experience in dealing with budgets, employees, customers, and patients. From the beginning, I have always been and stood on the deep-rooted beliefs and values that in managing and running a business, communication must come first, second, and not far behind is transparency. It would almost always be easier to do it myself, but in running a business, you have to have staff. You have to have a budget. You have to have accountability. And as your county commissioner, I have all of that to bring to the table. I'm listening to all the people of the county. They want to be heard and feel like what they're saying counts. That is how I run my business. I've always been responsible to not only patients and customers, but to my employees and to their families. Being held accountable from a budget standpoint, making sure expenses and overheads stay in check has always been a top priority. I promise to do the same in managing and making decisions for your hard-earned tax dollars. It is my promise to be responsible to you, to the taxpayers, to the developers, to the county leaders, and to also be respectful to the same people. I also promise to be responsive and listen and take your calls and be ready to come, do what I need to do to help you. It is my virtue that I am honest, I'm trustworthy, and that is my, and I answer to God, to my family, and to you, the citizens. I'm asking for your vote for Clay County Commissioner, District Five.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Condon?
In District Four, there are certain things that really matter a lot to citizens. Those things are protection of our First Amendment, our Second Amendment, our other rights that are in the Bill of Rights. I'm a member of the NRA. I believe wholeheartedly in a citizen's right to bear arms. I believe in your free speech, but I also believe in respecting each other's values. I believe in freedom of religion. I personally am a Christian, and I believe in Christian values, the Christian values that founded this nation. I also believe that we need to make sure that we're protecting our agriculture and our other natural resources in District Four. We are seeing exploding growth in our county, but we can't give up, and we can't have those landowners who've always owned that land have to be forced to give it up so that we can build a new road or we can have better access to a big-box store. I want to make sure we protect those rights, especially in District Four. I'm truly the conservative in the race. I think it matters a lot that you know who you're voting for and where they stand on the issues. The county commission is here to serve you. It is not a popularity contest. It is not about name recognition. It is about someone who will truly fight for the tough issues and truly represent our conservative values. I fought for four years on the Clay County School Board for Clay families, and I will promise that I will always keep family first because that's what matters most to me. And I will also represent your rights and your values. Please research your candidates and know where they stand. And I'm Betsy Condon, and I would love to represent you for District Four County Commission.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Thank you. And thank you to the Republican Liberty Caucus for having us this evening. I am known, and you can ask any staff member of our town, that I'm not a person that just shows up to vote at a meeting. I work night and day to help our community because I love our community so much, and I want to do everything I can to leave it better than I found it. Years ago, my community, when I lived in Georgia, was poisoned by a toxic pesticide, and I learned really quickly then that we need people who are truly going to represent the people and who are going to be a voice for the people and who are going to listen to the people. We were able to do great things through that, and I brought that to the table when I became a councilwoman. I am a servant leader, and I plan to continue that on as county commissioner. One thing I did as mayor is I had a monthly meeting with the mayor, and our citizens could come in and talk about anything. It was extremely informative to me, and I'm going to continue that as your county commissioner, to have a monthly meeting with our constituents in our district and hear exactly what the needs are and best ways to tackle that. So thank you. I'm Connie Thomas, and please vote for me as your county commissioner for District Three. Thank you. I would be honored.
Thank you for that. Mr. Renninger?
Yes, tonight you heard some of the challenges facing Clay County. We're going to have tropical storms. We're going to have hurricanes. We're going to have stormwater runoff. We're going to have flooding, Black Creek, especially in the Black Creek area. We're going to have not enough water in the Keystone Lakes area. We're going to have deteriorating roads. We're going to have problems in our environment with septic tanks, algae blooms, so light cleanup. We're going to have development. And in combination with this, we have something called COVID-19, which is going to make things all the more complex due to sales tax and gas tax revenue shortfalls. We're going to have to revise our shelter requirements. We're going to have to increase safety and security requirements. We're going to have changes in business practices in our bars and our way of work. We're going to have changes in our education. Today, you need a leader who's industrious, a leader who's data-driven, a leader who understands complex issues, a leader who's forward-thinking, a leader who's collaborative, a leader who will listen to all sides of the issue before they make a decision, a leader who won't buckle under pressure, a leader has a proven record. So you need a leader with experience. Leadership counts. Experience counts. Performance counts. Make your vote count. On August 18, elect Jim Renninger for Clay County Commission, District Three.
Thank you so much. That now concludes our forum for our county commissioner candidates. Thank you for all being here, and thank you for being so professional. We definitely appreciate it. You want to give a round of applause for the few folks that are here? You certainly can. All right. So don't forget that Clay County voters can register and vote in our straw poll at tallied.com. That's T-A-L-L-Y-E-D dot com. Once you register and get logged in, click on the RLC Straw Poll ballot. Early voting for the primary starts in Clay County on Thursday, August 6. Election Day is Tuesday, August 18. On behalf of the Republican Liberty Caucus, thank you for watching and being informed. Please be informed. Please vote appropriately. Our country is depending on us. Thank you.